Good evening. On behalf of the Dubuque League of Women Voters, I'd like to welcome the audience here and the television audience to this School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Mary Kelly and I'm a member of the League. Our League is a nonpartisan political organization which encourages citizens' participation in government. Membership is open to any citizen 18 years of age or older. We'd like to thank the candidates for their participation this evening and for their invaluable gift to us by being candidates for public office. The four candidates for four seats on the Dubuque Community School District Board are Mr. Michael Douglas, Ms. Kate Parks, Ms. Tammy Ryan, and Ms. Lisa Whitman. Each candidate can have a minute and a half for questions. They will have a minute and a half to answer and will be reminded of the time remaining with warning cards and finally by the bell. They will have two minutes for closing statements at the end of the forum. And now, Mr. Donahue, we will begin with you. What specific qualities and skills do you have that makes you a good school board member?
Well, first, I'll be the -- since I get to go first, I'll be the first of four to thank the League for holding the forum. I wish we had more gender balance in candidates, but...
Makes up for a couple of years ago.
It does make up for a couple of years, so it's only fair. No, I have enjoyed my time on the school board and I think in the eight years that I have been on there, I think I've clearly demonstrated an ability to lead, an ability to really adopt and support and champion good process at the school board. And I think that's one of the biggest and most important things that we can do as school board members, but we work collaboratively and a lot of discernment. It's not always unanimous, but we work together with a similar mission in mind and I think that that's what drives me as a school board member and I think that my eight years on the board have been representative of that.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone who made it out today into the League. My name is Kate Parks. I am a professor of sociology and a mom of a current first grader in the public school system. And I think that my roles as a teacher and an educator really give me a perspective that will be helpful on the board. I have the day in and day out experience of being in the classroom. I teach college students, so it's, you know, somewhat different than K through 12, but because of that, I also know what we're looking for when kids get to college. I know the skills that they need. I've worked on many collaborative teams with a variety of folks in academia, but I've also worn a lot of different hats in my career. I've also had this opportunity as a mom to kind of see what's going on in our schools and not just for my daughter, but for all of our kids across the community. As a sociologist, that's my area of expertise. I am skilled in research, data analysis, asking questions that are complicated, looking for the answers, and finding what possible solutions can be. So I think those are some things that I can lend to the board.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
Thank you, everyone, for being here and thanks to the League as well. I too believe that I have been able to bring some leadership to the board as well as the understanding of how businesses work, because this is a big company, if you want to look at it that way, with the budget that we have. But I also have the ability to see things and listen to the problems that people come to us with and to be able to know how to direct things in the right way. I think it's an ability to be able to, I don't know, just kind of listen and discern and direct. And I think it takes a lot of understanding for all of that. And being able to understand the schools, I've been in the school system, I raised a daughter through the school system, I've been in the schools through my job, through all the different schools, so I think I have a great understanding and can continue to bring that back to the board.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman.
Thank you. I'm Lisa Whitman. This will be my second term on the school board and I really learned a lot going through the first four years. My background is, I'm been in banking all my life, so I -- the financial part of the school board, it's a lot to understand and go through, so I feel like I have that expertise to understand the financial part. My husband is a teacher and coach in this school district and so I've always had a special place in my heart for teachers and coaches. And I've had five kids go through the school district. So with my experience and my thought process of listening and being in the community, I've volunteered a lot through the extracurricular, through the school district mostly. And I feel now with my second term, I'm really looking forward to exploring and continuing the great work that we're doing with the school board.
Thank you. Ms. Parks, what do you think is the most pressing issue for the upcoming school year that the school board would be able to address? And if you do have a most pressing issue, how would you like to address it?
Oh, boy. Well, I think, you know, the school district has made a commitment in the last year to looking at issues of equity within the district. And I commend that, that that's a really important step forward in hiring the Equity Director and really getting serious about looking at disparities within the overall school system. So I think as I look at the district and particularly schools where there are still some gaps in terms of achievement and opportunities, that we really need to spend some time examining what those gaps are and doing some research about how to address them. I don't think that there is one solution to how to do that, but I think that the solution can't be to not pay attention to it and to not be looking at, you know, where are students struggling, where are teachers struggling to meet students' needs, and how can we as a district best support them? So I think looking forward and looking toward, even, you know, beyond next academic year, looking, you know, into the future of our community, it's really important to make sure that all of our kids are achieving and have access to an education that's meeting their needs.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
I think that we need to make sure that we stay on the track of following the strategic plan that we have put forth and that we have been following steadfastly for the past seven to eight years. And I think that it is important that while we do look at the issues that do come up, that we make sure that we're meeting the needs of every student and to make sure that we don't lose our focus on just one set of kids, but making sure that all of our students get the education that they deserve. We do look at all the needs that are out there and we've done a great job of focusing extra funding to the Title I schools as they are needed. But I also don't think we want to lose focus of our other schools because they have just as much need, but just in a different capacity. And I think we need to make sure that we take a look at how we address those issues. And we only have a limited budget and that needs to keep in mind as how we're going to be able to do that. The funding is not increasing at the state level and that is something that we need to make sure that we continue to advocate for. And funding and teacher recruitment is going to be one of the biggest problems that are going to be facing school districts in the future and that's something that we need to be proactive on.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman.
I agree with the two points that Kate and Tammy just brought up with equity with our school kids. Also, in addition to that is a big focus in our strategic plan is to prepare our students for life after high school, you know, graduation, internships, getting the community involved for employment, training. Those are big things that we're really trying to focus our students, that they have a plan when they walk across that graduation stage. And it starts preparing them as their kindergarten is on up. So we have a lot of work and we're really focusing to make these years valuable, especially the high school years, that we give the kids the best we can while we have them and that starts when they're very young.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan. How can the school board help schools?
Mike Douglas is over here.
I'm sorry, Mike. I'm so sorry, Mike. Oh, dear, oh, dear, oh, dear. Okay. Thank you.
What they said. No. I think that, again, our compass is really the strategic plan that we worked on some seven years ago and we've refreshed it just in the past, in the past year. If you look at that strategic plan, I think we have established some quite aggressive goals. When you talk about student achievement, graduation rates, reading proficiency, you glance at the strategic plan and you see, well, you just have to improve at 5%. That is a, it takes yeoman's work to make that happen. And I think the other piece, nothing happens unless we continue to be good stewards of the resources that we have. And as Tammy pointed out, the state is not increasing our funding, which means we need to be more creative, more innovative, more collaborative with everything that we do. I agree with Kate. I think there is equity, but I think that's a community issue that needs to be tackled and I know it's being tackled. There are probably no fewer than five or six organizations out there all trying to address equity because it isn't just in the schools. And there's some great work being done. I think one of the things that as a community we need to probably think about is how we bring those groups together so we can share all the information and the knowledge that we've grown.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan. How can the school board help school staff to address problematic student behavior in a way that maintains a positive learning environment?
Our job is to support the administration and the decisions that they make. It's not our job as a school board member to get down into that level. All we can do is make sure that we have policy in place that provides for a positive learning environment for all students that come into the classroom. And making sure that the policies that are in place are ones that the teachers can handle and that make sense for the parents. And other than that, it's not our job as a school board member to get involved in the classroom level as far as that goes, other than policy.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman.
I agree with Tammy. I would have the same response. Like she said, our job is to make sure that there is good systems in place. And it does take cooperation with the family at home for that child and the teachers and coaches and counselors and principals. It takes everyone involved to help with discipline and making sure that our student is learning and growing as a productive citizen as they grow up. So it takes everyone, not just the school, and we will support the ideas that the superintendent and the principals and all the staff come up with.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
You know, our teachers, they do a fantastic job, but it's a job. And I know that, you know, every child that shows up at our doorstep has something different in their backpack and it can foster itself in a lot of different behaviors. And so we've, it requires that we have teachers that are multi-talented. And I think the comments that you've heard have centered around, you know, our job is to make sure, to the extent that we can, that we are providing resources and leadership to help and assist in those classrooms. And I know that, you know, one of our, one of our goals obviously is to be a district of choice when it comes to teachers wanting to be in our district. And absent those resources and that leadership coming from the administration, but even at the building level, coming from the principals, we have great success stories in the district where we are, you know, we're engaging those behaviors and we're making a difference. And yeah, it takes everybody. We need parental involvement, we need community involvement to assist us in that because we don't have infinite resources. But I do think that we've laid it out pretty clearly in our strategic plan that that's what we want to do and we want to continue to be a resource to the teachers that we challenge every day.
Thank you. And Ms. Parks.
I think, you know, when we think about this, I think for me, it's really about making sure as a board that we're supporting the efforts that we see that are working well in schools and that are working for teachers. And, you know, like others have said, I don't, I wouldn't consider it my job to be micromanaging what teachers are doing in their classrooms, but instead, you know, helping to support things that might be successful in one place. So we've seen, I've seen teachers using, you know, mindfulness or yoga or whatever that might be that works for their students and making sure that our policies allow for some flexibility in how that can play out. But I also think it's important to consider how things like social and emotional learning can be part of the curriculum to help students get the tools that they need to either self-regulate and calm themselves down or to also know how to interact with diverse other kids who are different from them. I think that's an important skill that we're certainly looking at when our students are coming to us in college, like, do they have these abilities to interact with folks who are different from them and trying to encourage that? And also, you know, just trying to make sure that we're thinking about, you know, these are community challenges and parental challenges and it all ties in, but thinking about kids with concentrated needs or behaviors being in one place or in a few places and how that might make it more challenging.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman, we'll start with you on this one. In your opinion, how is the partnership between Dubuque High Schools and NICC working?
I think it's a great opportunity for our students, those that are choosing careers. I'll just use nursing as an example. They can take classes while they're in high school and financially, it's affordable. You know, it's covered while they're in high school. They can get some of these things taken care of before they exit out of our schools and it gives them a little jump ahead of time. And maybe they, it's a way of testing out a certain occupation that they are interested in and maybe it's not something they want to continue after high school. So it helps them both ways to dabble in those opportunities as much as possible while still finishing their high school requirements. I think it's, and it's helping, like I said, we're trying to get these kids on a path. So the more extra education they can get outside of our schools, that helps them. And it helps financial with them too, as well as affording it.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
At the risk of sounding like a commercial for NICC, I would tell you that I believe that in Dr. Wee, we have probably one of the most innovative, bright minds in community college environment. And I have had the pleasure of sitting on numerous boards with Dr. Wee and I know he represents the entire organization out there. There are times when we'll, we'll just simply start a conversation with Dr. Wee about something we'd like to have and, you know, he immediately embraces it and he's got people working on it. So I think that the answer is it's going very well and we really probably have only tapped the tip of the iceberg in terms of what's possible. I think the next steps for us as a district is to continue to think about what were additional partnership opportunities might exist. We've got some of the basics, to be quite honest with you. But I think that as we continue to try to identify a path for each kid we have in the district that's unique to them, that we are going to have opportunities in smaller groups even, to help, to help our young people find the path that they desire, whether that is college, whether that's two-year, whether that's simply starting work as soon as they're done. And it's, it's, it really is, it was very fortunate that we have a partner in NICC and Dr. Wee that we have.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
So as the newbie, this will be something I will look forward to learning more about once I have my seat, hopefully, at the board. But I think, you know, any partnerships that we look at that can help students find a pathway makes sense, especially if it's a pathway that they are choosing and it's something they want to do, it aligns with their interests and their abilities. It makes sense to me. I think coming from the perspective of someone who works at a college, I mean, obviously if that was a path later that those students chose to take, like, they would have credits probably to apply to their degree, which is always a helpful thing to complete that in a timely manner. So, you know, I think, as Mike said, like, exploring where there's opportunities for growth for that would be important. And also making sure that those who want the opportunity or are seeking it do have a path to get there, that it's kind of open to anyone who wants it.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
Well, there's really not much more I can add. Everybody's really covered it. We have a great partnership with NICC and it provides great opportunity and it also is helping with the workforce need that's out there in the community. The community, the labor force that's out there that is coming to NICC and to the, to the school district saying they're in need of workers, it's a way for us to connect with, how can we get our high school students trained in a skill that will help fill that need that is within our community? So I think that's something that is very vital, not only for the school district, but for the community. So we're very lucky to have Dr. Wee. He's an amazing leader and a great partner for the school district to be able to work with. And the classes that students can take in high school that can get them some college credit and it's affordable way to get an education and to get a skill and a trade.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue. To what extent has instruction in art and music suffered because of the budget constraints?
In my tenure, you know, I don't, it really hasn't. I think that's too often across the state when you have districts that are in a bit of financial stress. That is some of the low-hanging fruit that we often see harvested. But I would say in our district, there hasn't been significant cuts in arts and music. We've, I think we've done a, I think we've done a good job with respect to when we're faced with making certain course corrections, if you may, in terms of what the, what our finances provide us. I know it's been the commitment of the board for the last eight years that I've served on it, that we, as best we can, we're not magicians, we can't make the money, but as best we can is to insulate the classroom from those cuts. We've looked at other creative ways to create efficiencies and to become more effective in a way that doesn't necessarily draw on our limited resources. But I would say that generally we're, I think we're in pretty good shape now. Again, if we could magically create some additional resources, we would love to take those deeper, those, you know, those particular subjects deeper into the elementary schools. And so we'll continue to advocate where we can and see if we can't make some of that happen.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
I think it's definitely a strength of the district that we've retained arts and music programs and that those have been supported. And, you know, just anecdotally, from my daughter's experience, like, she wants to be an artist or a teacher. I mean, those are her aspirations. So having the opportunity to be doing art a few times a week is her favorite day at school. She really thrives. And I think, you know, it's laudable that those cuts haven't been made and that we're still providing those opportunities across the community, especially when we think about the Dubuque community and how much dedication we have to art, you know, as a city. It would really be problematic, I think, if our schools didn't mirror that and they do. And so I think, like Mike said, you know, how can we, if we could wave a magic wand and have more financing, that would of course be better so that teachers wouldn't have to be kind of rotating around so much. And there'd be enough resources that you'd have your own art teacher all the time or music teacher all the time that didn't have to bounce around. And clearly, you know, that's difficult given the financial status that we're in. But I appreciate that the district hasn't, at this point, made those kinds of decisions where those programs get cut because they're really vital. They're just as important as other curriculum.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
We have been lucky. And in the areas where we do offer extra things, we've gone to partnerships with our LEAP program at the middle schools that provide some of that opportunity for the art and music to come into play. So if it's not being met in one area, we look for areas of partnership with the community to expand that program in different ways. But I think it's very important. I think that there are ways that it is infused within the curriculum on all manners. So it's, it's not like if they don't have art every day, it's not there, you know, within the classroom teacher. So I think our district has made, we've been very lucky to be able to look at things from a broader eye when it comes to taking a look at budget. And that has not been something that's even been discussed because it's part of the whole education of a student. And as the eight years that I have been on, it has been important and I hope to continue to see it as important. But again, it all comes down to funding and we just have to be, not that that's even on the, on the plate, but we just have to know what it all entails if one, if something were to happen. More money would be good because we could expand more programs.
Thank you. And Ms. Whitman.
My husband's an art teacher. I believe that creativity is very vital to a growing young individual. Where would we be with our tech, you know, if we didn't have creative people? There's everything, every job we do comes from creativity. So music and art, as students, there's no limits. I mean, there's no right or wrong answer in those, in those subject areas. So a kid could be having a bad day or, you know, feel pressure, they go to an art class, they go to a music class, they're comfortable, they're enjoying it. And when they enjoy something and succeed in something, the rest of the day goes better, the other subject matters get better. So we could never take away the arts. It's part of forming our students. It's very necessary. And I think our school does the best job they can with it and I'd love to see even more if that was possible.
Thank you. Ms. Parks. Should the theory of intelligent design be incorporated in any way in school curriculum?
No. I mean, I think I would say we need to stick with science and that's kind of where it should be. I don't know how to expand, I wasn't expecting that kind of a question, to be honest.
You briefed me on it.
Right. I mean, my understanding of it is, you know, it's not, it's not legitimate. It's a different point of view that's not backed up with research. We need to stick with standards around the scientific method and kind of our understanding of how science works. And that's been, you know, that should be where we're at with it.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
I have nothing further to add. I'm just going to cut to the chase and just say, I agree. And we just have to stick with what we, what we're doing. I'm not going to go on.
Same answer. It's not my expertise to answer on that subject and stick to our science, math people and go with what the curriculum is following right now.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Pass.
Is that an option?
I don't have anything to add to that.
All right. Thank you. All right. On the issue of guns, violence, guns in the schools, what can the school board do to ensure that our children and teachers and staff are safe from gun violence? And this is directed to Tammy Ryan first.
Boy, I wish there was something that the school board could magically do to prevent that, but there is not something. We can't stop crazy. The best thing that we can do is make sure that we have systems in place that can work to not only help foresee problems that could be arising, but an action plan to act when something does happen. And I think that we have shown that we've got a very good system in place. It's not foolproof. I don't want to test it, but what we have done has shown that the practices that we have in place, every time something, you know, minor or major comes up, we can go back and reevaluate what went well, what didn't go well, what can we improve on? And it's the job of the school board is to make sure and to keep updating, making sure that we are updated on what systems are out there, what the school district is planning on doing. We don't even know the plans that are in place because it's not our job to know that. Those that need to know, know how to, what's going on with the systems and the plans that are in place. But it's important that we have one and we do. And every year, something new is in place. And again, this year, we've got some new systems in place and I think it's very important that those are followed. But the school board can't guarantee anything, but all we can do is make sure that it is always on the forefront and we're always making sure that it is something to be looked at.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman.
I agree with what Tammy said and we also work very closely with law enforcement. We're staying in constant contact. We have law enforcement people in our schools. So we're following the lead of their suggestions, our principals, you know, everyone in the buildings take this very seriously and are always looking for, you know, possible mishaps that might happen and trying to be proactive with everything. So we work with law enforcement and as a school board, we are updated and we make sure... sure that we continue to find new ways and better ways to, um, make sure, uh, unexpected incident doesn't happen where people get hurt.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Yeah, I mean, it's a sad topic unfortunately that we deal with across this country and, um, and as, as has been stated, there's just no way to prevent it. Um, we just never know when that's gonna pop up. I do think that we try to create a culture in the school district of if you see something, say something. And, and that certainly, um, is a, hopefully becomes an early warning, um, system for us. And, and we have, we, as a school board, our job, I think, is, um, a lot of people always ask what our plan is and what would we do? And we wouldn't tell you if we knew it, um, because that wouldn't be, you know, that would be the wrong thing to do. Uh, but what we can do is assure the public and our parents and our students that, again, we are devoting the right resources to making sure that we have, as best we can, um, the right systems in place, that we've got the right partnerships created, as has been mentioned with law enforcement, um, so that when and if something would ever take place, we, we have an ability to respond and respond in a timely manner and that people always know, um, really where their, where their child is, what the condition is, and, and that's something that we take very seriously.
Thank you. Ms. Parks?
So I think this is probably the scariest issue as a parent with a small child in the school because it, you know, it is just terrifying to think about this kind of scenario. Um, I know from what I've seen in her experiences so far, that the schools are really trying to at least have a plan in place and that it's a developmentally appropriate plan. So there's something about a gorilla video that she's told me about a few times. Um, but, and she talks about it, like what we do. And so I think, you know, supporting, making sure like the, the staff and teachers and administrations are trained on how that plan will work and how to execute it, as well as, um, being aware of warning signs if they're there, taking them seriously if parents are, are concerned or if they've noticed concerns in the school. I don't think that's the board's responsibility to manage, but to support those that, you know, those underneath us to be able to see that and support it. Um, and just making sure, you know, that our systems kind of fit with this changing problem. Um, and that's what's really difficult. I mean, I appreciate for sure that there's a partnership with law enforcement and also that, that hasn't meant that our schools have been like a police state in some way, um, that other districts, you know, across the country, we see kind of get more regulatory in that way, but instead they're there as a support, uh, to help the staff and the students that are in the school.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman? Regarding, um, the school board's legislative priorities, one of which was establishing community mental health systems that allow for comprehensive school programs. What does that mean and how to accomplish it?
Um, we do have mental health experts in our school district and, um, working with other experts in the mental health areas. It, it's teamwork, you know? Our, our teachers can only do so much, our counselors, we do the best that we can and we get advice from outside agencies and work together. But it, once again, with, talking with discipline too, the, this is, um, an issue that needs a lot of help. A lot of outside people helping, parents, family members, you know, mental health experts, the teachers. It's a, a community of people to help service our kids that have some troubles. So it's not just one place and it's, it's a lot of work.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Yeah, I mean, this is an area that I think that everybody acknowledges there's a lot of work to be done and, and unfortunately, not that it sounds like a broken record, but it, it does come down to resources and, and we certainly have some tremendous counselors in our, in our, in our buildings. Um, but we also know that in some cases, they're just, you know, they are not necessarily, um, trained, they were trained for guidance counselors, they're not necessarily trained as mental health professionals. Uh, we do continue to, um, look to partner because I do believe that this, like some of the, um, some of the other issues we've talked about tonight, um, are, uh, they do demand a, a, a community response and a, and a community partnership to be able to, uh, to address it. Uh, we, we, I think we're working hard with those folks. We just lost one of our, you know, one of our, uh, really experts in that field who is gonna work with a multi-county, um, in a similar position and a multi-county kind of approach. And I think our plan would be, that's, you know, that's one example of, um, external partnerships that we can continue to create and expand, uh, that can help us because we, um, we can't do it alone. It, it, it's impossible, but I do think that that doesn't mean we don't try. And, and so I think we continue to keep our eye on that ball and try to keep moving it forward.
Thank you. Ms. Parks?
So I know, uh, from my experience at the college level, like we're, we're having a lot more students coming to college that have mental health issues and, and as faculty, I think a lot of us wish we had more tools in our toolbox to know how to best serve those students and what kinds of resources they need, even in our teaching practice, like what makes the most sense. And I think from my experiences talking with teachers in our district, that's true for them too, that they would also like more tools in their toolbox for how to best reach and meet the needs of students who have mental health issues. Because as Lisa said, this is not, we can't just silo it down to one office or one person in a school who can deal with that, particularly when we know within the state of Iowa that there's a huge shortage of mental health counselors, especially counselors for kids. And so I think we have to keep trying to push as much as we can with the state to really take this issue seriously and to give it funding and give it resources so that we can get that help that we need in our schools and not expect our teachers to have to take on even more of that kind of counseling role than they're already doing. It's not what they're meant to be doing. So I think it's really about talking to our representatives and really pushing for more funding as much as possible for mental health across the state.
Thank you. And Ms. Ryan?
I agree. It all comes down to funding. Everything gets pushed onto the classroom teacher. They're expected to do absolutely everything and now they have to be mental health counselors. And while they're willing to do it, they don't, they do not have the training for that. And there's very few people in the building that do. Um, mandates come down on our teachers. Now they have to have suicide awareness, um, training on that. What, what a big burden on teachers to now have to have that type of a training, but yet does it go any further than that? So it, it, we, we put this as a priority because we need the funding. The schools have to be supported in able, in order to be able to support the teachers and the students that come through the doors. Um, it's a growing issue. Everybody says that it is, but there's nothing being done about it. And, and we just have to keep advocating for more help so we can reach out and work with partners within the community.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Donahue? Is there an achievement gap perhaps based on racial or economic factors throughout the school district? And if you think there is, um, what can we do to close that gap?
Yeah, I mean, there, there's, without question, there's a gap. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, one of the things that we continue to do is to, is to really drill into that, look for, um, opportunities for us. I know we have done a lot of work and, and I said earlier, I said every kid shows up with different things in their backpack. And, and I think that we have got to continue to reach out, engage parents. Um, we know that there's a high correlation, uh, in some cases with, um, households that are maybe single households, they're, they're, uh, single, um, female households that are really leading those. There's correlations across the board, all different areas. And I think you can, you can kind of dissect the data to try to figure out where the, the most glaring gaps, um, exist. But, you know, some of the things that we've been trying to do in the district is, uh, it, it is just not up to the teacher to close that gap. It's not up to the administrator to close the gap. Uh, we've got to, we've got to create and engage parents. Um, we've got to engage teachers in that. Um, and we've got to come up with creative, I think, creative solutions around, um, how we address those. But there, there's clearly gaps and that is a work in process. And I think you can see it clearly in our strategic plan, the kind of things that we're trying to do through our connector programs, those types of things. Reach out and engage them in a conversation.
Thank you. Ms. Parks?
Well, I definitely agree that there's a gap and as a, a research data person spent time even today looking at what some of those gaps look like. And they're, they're even at the elementary school level. We know that they're there because the state told us that they are. Um, when we look at the high school level, we even see gaps with high school graduation rates for African Americans and white students. So there's no doubt that it exists. And to say that it's not there would just not be looking at the, the data in the right way. And as for what to do, I mean, this is, like I said before, it's a multifaceted problem because we are dealing with like a community where we have concentrated poverty in one area of our town and then a concentration of kids from poverty in five of our schools in our town. Uh, and increasing poverty in other schools outside of just downtown. So I think as a whole community, we need to be aware of and being, paying attention to increasing poverty across the board. But how that plays out in schools does have a, it does have an impact on achievement. And, you know, the research shows, look, I'm a nerd professor, but the research shows like more integrated schools in terms of race and socioeconomic status help to close this gap. It's not a perfect solution. It doesn't guarantee that every kid in an integrated school is going to have this huge growth, but over and over again, the research I look at says that that would make a really big difference. What does that mean for our community? It means spending a lot of time to figure out how that looks and what we need to do about it.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan?
There is definitely a gap and I think that, um, there are different things that need to happen and it's not just on the school. It's a community-wide effort that needs to take a look at this. Um, we're looking at attendance, you know, starting with that, making sure attendance is, um, looked at seriously. There's different systems in place that happen, but that, that gap is everywhere. It's not just at one school. It is, it's with most of our schools that have, um, the, the minority population. And there are outside factors that we need to figure out what's, um, part of that and what can we do to support that? And we've shown efforts of doing that at, um, our Title I schools. Audubon's a great example of some of the systems that we have in place that is working to close that gap. So we need to see more of what we're doing there and how we can replicate that and to keep working on it. It's, it's a never-ending problem and it's been going on for a long time and it's something that we need to continue to keep looking at and, um, aiming to close.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman?
All our students come from different social economic backgrounds, different family lives, you know, different size of families. Some families are living together to, you know, financially live under one roof. You know, we, we try our best, um, also trying to keep our families in the community schools where they grow up in, where they're living next to. So, and also like Tammy said, in our Title I schools, that there is a, a larger, um, gap and, and school is in need. We do have co-teaching. We have a lot of extra efforts to help with, helping with these students that need extra help. But it's, you know, we can't change where people live. We can't change the different backgrounds they come from or the different beliefs they have. We just work the best we can to address the students and educate them and, um, try to educate the families. If families come up and ask for advice, you know, what they can do at home to help our kids, what other activities can we get our kids involved in so they feel more in, involved in the school and the community? You know, we're, we're open for anything to help, but we, we can't change, you know, where our kids come from. We just try to do the best we can when they're in school with us.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Parks? How can the school board continue and to support non-English speaking students? Do you see any changes in program or funding or priorities?
Uh, I think, you know, I think as the school board, it's just supporting the, the structure that exists there, right? And, and prioritizing resources when it comes to, to that population. Like we know there are some schools that have a higher percentage of kids who, who are non-native English speakers. And so making sure that they have what they need, that the teachers have what they need, that we are supporting teachers and, and, you know, in those areas that can offer the kind of support that the kids will need to succeed. Um, so I think it's really, our role would be prioritizing that as we look at the budget and making decisions about, you know, what gets funded and, and supporting curriculum's going to really help those kids.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan?
Our job as a school board is to advocate for that funding. Um, there are many languages that come into our school district and, and it's growing. And you'd be surprised at even the, the number that is out there and you talk to other school districts within the state and how that number is growing. And so it's, and it's languages that people, um, aren't trained in on how to teach with. So it's a matter of what kind of resources can we get? What kind of funding can we get? How can that be weighted, um, for the district to be able to meet those needs? And, um, the best the school board can do is to advocate for that to be a priority so it's seen as a need, um, because that is part of the, um, academic gap that is out there with these, with students that have, um, are, are English language learners with our education system. So the best the school board can do is fund it and, and prioritize the need. We've done a good job on our website of, um, being able to reach out to parents, um, to meet languages. I think we have a, a Marshalese page. You can, all the stuff on the school board or the school district website can be translated into Marshalese as well as Spanish. So I think that, you know, we're, we're doing the best that we can with the great need that we see out there.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman?
Um, I agree with everything Tammy just said and with technology growing and growing, I believe there will be more tools to help these students with, you know, translating, using technology. And funding is what we would need to bring those programs to the schools, to help assist the teachers with communicating with these students. It takes time. I believe when they first come in, I'm sure there's huge barriers by the time they finish a grade level, you know, they're acclimated to, you know, getting through and their language barrier isn't as tough as it is at the beginning. But, um, with more funding, we could have more technology and more help assistance. Because there's no way all our staff is gonna learn all these different languages that come in our doors.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue?
Um, I hate to be a broken record and, and we do talk about funding a lot. And I, I think it's important for people to understand it's not just about throwing money at. I mean, we are to, you look at over the last 10 years and this state has consistently failed to invest in education despite however they move the numbers around. But we, in terms of resources for us to be able to meet the ever-changing needs of our students, we are terribly underfunded. Um, you know, the language piece is just one of them. And we know that there's a strong correlation between that and, and student achievement, but you have to also understand it's a sum zero game. If we want to put dollars over, uh, to address the, the, so many of the different language barriers, and you're right, I, I don't remember the number. It's an astounding number of, uh, different languages that are spoken by our students. Um, it, it would astound you and, and to think that we'd have to move resources there, the question then becomes what do you take it from? And so that is why it's important that we advocate and advocate for more funding. But the superintendent was just sharing with me a story today saying, there is a, there is a large influx of Guatemalan, um, children into our community and they're not in the five Title I schools. They're everywhere. And he was sharing with me that there is, um, something like 30 different variations of the Mayan language that are spoken depending upon where that child comes from in Guatemala. So you can imagine the challenge of, of, as a moving target without saying anything else, but it's something that, it's a reality we face.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan? What is your opinion on the issue of school vouchers?
I do not support school vouchers. I think that... I'm gonna answer this. I, I, I think that if it's going to be state-funded, we talk about funding all of the time. We don't have enough money to go around as it is. And I think we have a private system for, in place and I think it's great. I think that that is wonderful for it to be there for, um, parents and families that choose to do that. But I also think it's important that as long as, in Dubuque... But I also think it's important that as long as, in Dubuque, I don't think it necessarily is a system that would, is needed. I think that we have a good public system and that our focus needs to be on making sure that we are funded well enough to meet the needs that it isn't necessarily an issue. If you want to choose to go to a private school, then you can choose to do that. There's not enough money to be taken out of the public system as it is, to be taken over to the voucher system.
Thank you. And Ms. Whitman.
I too am not in favor of the voucher system. Our taxpayers are, we're supporting the public schools. We have a great choice in Dubuque. We have a great parochial school, private school, and we have the public schools. And it's a family's choice. So, there's not enough money to go around, you know, to, you know, because if the voucher is, you know, by taxpayers is supporting the, the funds are supporting the public schools, we take those vouchers to the private sector. You know, that's, we still need to staff our schools. Our public schools have, you know, we have all the buildings, we have the teachers, the staff. You know, that's money that the public schools is losing towards the private schools. And in Dubuque, I think that we have a good private school system going, and I think they're strong, and it can be supported by the people that choose that.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
I'm not a supporter of it, obviously. Being an eight-year school board member of the public system, I do, I agree with the previous statements that there are, there are choices in this community, and they're good choices. But I do think that it's important to remember that public schools accept every child, every child that comes across our doorstep regardless of what they come with. We have a responsibility to educate them. And the reality is, when you get into vouchers, you start to redistribute basically finite resources. And I think that when you do that, then you start to create clusters and, of individuals who perhaps don't have the same opportunities that some do. And I, like I say, I like the fact they've got choices, but I don't think that the taxpayers have a responsibility to fund that choice that they, that they want to make. So, I would oppose them.
Thank you. And Ms. Parks.
I am also in opposition to school vouchers. And I think the formula for how that's kind of coming, from my understanding from the state, if it is coming, look, it's, it's not couched as school vouchers. It's called an educational savings account. And again, agree with everyone, public dollars belong in public schools. And the research shows that when you have a voucher system or a choice system, that it's really an illusion of choice. Only certain folks within that kind of a system have a choice. And it ends up increasing segregation, both on racial lines and socioeconomic lines. So, I would absolutely oppose this and also, you know, advocate to the state that we cannot move in this direction, that public education is this important investment we make as a society, because everyone can come, because it's accessible to everyone, and that money that we get needs to stay in those schools.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman. How does the school board communicate directly with the public, and are there any changes on the horizon?
I don't believe there's any changes. How the school board communicates with the public is anyone's free to approach us. It's, and we have committee meetings twice a month for, to discuss educational and facilities. So, people are able to come, speak at these committee meetings. We can engage in conversation with them. And any of those that watch the school board meetings once a month, we're not able to engage with the public at those meetings. We can listen to them. So, we encourage people to approach us, talk with us. We encourage them to, you know, if they have ideas, approach their principals, superintendent. We encourage that, and I don't see any changes in that.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Well, just so I earn the $5 that the superintendent gave me today, I do think it starts at the top. And I, and I truly believe we have one of the best superintendents in the state. And I think one of the reasons that we do is that he is approachable 24/7. I know I violate it all the time sending him texts, you know, early, late weekends, and he's immediately responsive because that's, he believes that's his, his job. And I do think that we have, I know eight years ago, when we sat down and started crafting our first strategic plan, one of the, one of the most important things we wanted to work on was our communication with the, with our, with our community and the stakeholders in our community. Because we, to use Tom Barton's language, who's not running again, you know, the people own the joint. And, and we owe it to them to be transparent. We owe it to them to be part of the decision-making, and we owe it to them to hold us accountable. And that's why we, in addition to, everything is open. The committee meetings are open, our board meetings are open. But we take specific steps to try to communicate. You know, three times a year, we'll sit down and report out, how are we doing on our strategic plan? That is a public event. And people can const, you know, they can, they can ask the leadership, they can ask any individual board member. And I think the fact that we have demonstrated an ability and a willingness to listen is one of the reasons I think we benefit from a, really a good, strong communication environment in this community.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
Once again, so what I've seen, I'm not on the board yet, but I know I've seen the communication opportunities and that school board members have been out and about in the community and on social media and in the meetings, trying to gather feedback. And I think as a new board member, what I hope to bring is also this openness that I want to learn and listen from the community, from the teachers, even from the kids as much as I can about what they need, what they like, what they don't like, so that we can, you know, learn the most from the people that are most affected by it. And really, you know, inform and shape our decisions based on that knowledge from people that are in the system, who are experts in what they do, and, and really know the ins and outs more than we ever could on, on the outside of it. So, I think that's my plan, is to be as open as possible and to engage with teachers, voters, kids, everyone, so that I can be the, the most well-informed as I can be.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
Well, I agree with what everybody has said so far. We, I agree with Mike, it does start from the top, and I think it's come a long way in the past eight years. The communication has been a lot better. We've made sure that there's been a communication director hired to make sure that the information is not only getting out just to the families within the school district, but to the community as a whole. And we try to make sure that we are ahead of issues as opposed to behind them, and we're there to address any questions that anybody has. I know all of my fellow school board members are always answering emails, taking phone calls to anybody who contacts them. And if they don't have the answer, it's to direct them to the person who does have that answer. And it's more of a sounding board type of a situation. And I think we've done a very good job with that. I don't see anything changing, other than to keep up the work that we have been doing and to move forward to make sure that we continue to have that transparency, which we've maintained, I feel that we have over the past, for sure, the eight years that I have been on and will continue to do so.
Thank you. Well, the last question, I do believe, we'll start with Mr. Donahue. Is there an issue that you'd like to address that we haven't talked about this evening? And what is that issue, and why would it be important to you?
God, we've covered a lot. I'm trying to think of what we could possibly cover. You know, I think, I don't know that there's an individual topic. We've, we've covered a lot. I think the, the, the one topic, I think anytime you have, and again, we welcome Kate to the, to the board, but I think it's, for me, it's always about good process and, and making sure that we as board members, we stay in our lane. We're, we're addressing the things that we should be doing. We're advocating where we need to be. We're not getting down into the weeds, because I think as, as Kate alluded to, there are subject matter, we have incredibly talented subject matters experts across the district. And while I, I share in, in always learning more about different topics, at the end of the day, our job is to take that information that we're provided and try to make the best decisions we can on behalf of the district. So, I, I really do think that one of the reasons that we sit in a very good position today is because we have had a, a school board, a superintendent, and an overall, a district aligned strategically through a, through a written plan that we, that we follow and use as our compass in all of our decisions that we make. And I think that's something that I want to make sure that we, we continue to do so.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
So, I think something that comes to mind for me is really thinking about, as a district, how we can continue to recruit and retain just really amazing teachers and keep them in our community, particularly at a time when the state is making that really difficult with some of the decisions that they've made related to collective bargaining. And so, I think as a district, so far, we've, as far as what I've seen, done a really good job of, of not making decisions that really end up penalizing teachers and making their jobs harder or making their salaries worse, but instead really have prioritized, like, how can we retain them and keep them here, especially when they're good? And I think that extends to as well, paraprofessionals in the classrooms, and we need to think about even more how to support them and make sure that, you know, we're building up enough of, of a cohort of them to really be in our classrooms to support the good work that teachers are doing. And this might seem random in terms of the connection, but I also think we have to think about it in terms of climate change, which might seem weird. But if we think about last winter, you guys remember last winter? It was terrible. So, just like the realities of changing climate, whether that means, you know, making sure our buildings have air conditioning or making sure that, you know, our, our salary, our wage staff is not going weeks without getting paid because of blizzards and polar vortexes. Like, I think those realities, we really need to be, need to be on our radar to support our professionals in the schools.
Thank you. And Ms. Ryan.
I think it's important to remember that the schools can't do it alone. I think it needs to be known that we are there to educate the students, and we educate every student that walks through the door, no matter what they have, burdens that they carry. And it, it takes a community to be out there and to support the schools and to help the parents and the partnerships. The more partnerships that we can build, that we can do with our students and our teachers and each building and the business partners that we do, all make a better school district. And it all helps everybody rise to the top. And I think as a community, we've done a great job with that, and I think we need to continue to do so, because we cannot expect our teachers to do it alone. They are, they are expected to do absolutely everything anymore. They are the counselor, they are the, the, the teacher, they're, they, you name it, the teachers are doing it. And so, the partnerships that we can continue to build, I think, will help make our school district and our community even better.
Thank you. And Ms. Whitman.
One topic that we didn't really discuss is our facilities. You know, we have a great staff that is constantly checking our facilities, our schools. We have 13 elementary schools, three junior highs, two high schools, that's, and grounds and, you know, sporting events, facilities that need upkeep all the time. So, we're, in our strategic planning and in our funding, we're always prioritizing where work needs to be done and make sure the schools are safe for our kids, and that we put air conditioning where we can, we, you know, do remodeling. There's, there's, I believe, a five-year plan for what we're going to spend our money on. And we have a great staff, and we work together. Those things are brought to the committee meetings at the school board, so we do approve them and, and talk through them. So, we have great facility people that are always keep an eye on our buildings to make sure they're safe.
Thank you. Each candidate now has two minutes for closing remarks, and we'll start with Mr. Donahue.
Good night. No, I'm just kidding. No, I, you know, it has been a pleasure and an honor to serve for the last eight years. And I think tonight, you've probably just, we've touched on the, just the very tip of iceberg when it comes to things that we are concentrating on and working towards in terms of education. I think, I already, I already earned my $5 from the superintendent, but I will tell you, I think also this community enjoys one of the best school districts in the state of Iowa. And, and I think we've been good stewards from a financial perspective. You can look around the state, and there's some scary trends going on. You're not seeing those in Dubuque. And I think that's because we have, we, like I say, we've been good stewards. We've made, I believe we have made the right decisions. You know, I officiated college basketball for 25 years, and I always tell people, I wasn't in it to, you know, to make friends, but I was in it. My, my goal all along was, it might not be the most popular call, but I wanted to get the right call. And I think that my colleagues on the, on the board have, have supported that, and we see that in our strategic plan. We have so much more to go. It would be wrong to think, even though we talk a lot about things that we believe are going right in the district, we're far from done. And when you look at our strategic plan, you can see that. It's, a lot of districts will just create a little bit of a layout plan so they can check the box and say, yeah, we did that. But we've got a lot of work to do. And I'm excited to be able to roll up our sleeves again and, and, and work with the superintendent, work with the teachers. We are committed to creating the district of choice, both from a student perspective, from a family perspective, or from a teacher perspective. I think that is something that we are all committed to, and, and I believe that we are on the, we are on the early stages of that. But like I said, we have, we have plenty of work to do, but I do think that we got the right people here to do it.
Thank you. Ms. Parks.
So, I couldn't be more excited to be serving the community in this way. I was really inspired to run through conversations that I had with some local teachers and also parents in the community, and also through the work that I've been doing on the Human Rights Commission, looking at issues of equity in education. So, for me, I mean, this position really aligns with what I've positioned my whole career around, which is looking at education issues and especially looking at equity within education. So, I'm, I'm very excited because I think that I can bring skills to the board that can help us moving, move in, in the positive directions that, that the district is moving in, as well as to help analyze and understand and really research some of the places where we have challenges. So, I'll be able to bring an expertise and a know-how into doing that, and I'm excited to be able to, to lend that to the board. You know, also, I think as a mom and a professor, I mean, this is, this is directly related to my life and what I'm doing, and not just for my own kids. I mean, obviously, I care about their education a lot, but their parents are both nerds, so I'm sure they're going to be fine, right? But just thinking about for our whole community, what, what can we do to make sure that we're serving the kids across the community in all of our schools and making sure that they have what they need to be successful? So, I'm thrilled to be a part of this. I'm, I'm really excited to be listening and learning and leading in this role, and I look forward to, to doing that.
Thank you. Ms. Ryan.
It's been my privilege and pleasure to be able to serve on the past eight years with the, with some great members of the board. And I'm proud of the work that we've done with the strategic plan, and I'm proud of the great hire we did and the superintendent. I'll have to agree with Mike, we do have one of the best superintendents, and we do have a great district in the state of Iowa. All you have to do is look at other communities and the problems that they're facing, and the way that we have stayed the steady course of setting forth a strategic plan and making sure that we're following it and, and, and holding our administration and teachers accountable to it. It's so much easier to just go with the status quo, but every year, we challenge and push back and look for different ways for things to be done, and I look forward to being able to do that again. I think that has helped to make our district a shining example around the state. When, when we go to some conferences for school boards, they come to us and ask us, what are you doing? What is it that you're doing that is, that is going so well? We hear that from other administrators as well. So, I think that the course that we have set is a good one, and I'm looking very forward to continuing on that and meeting the challenges that we know we're going to face, because there are always challenges in education. It is never a dull day, and there will always be lots of happies and lots of not-so-good days. But I think overall, we've got the right people in the right place, and we need to continue to do that and to build on the successes that we have had and to make this a district where people... have had, and to make this a district where people want to live, people want to send their kids, and where people want to come and work.
Thank you. And Ms. Whitman?
I feel so honored that I've been on the school board for four years, and I'm looking forward to the next four years. We are helping mold the citizens, the young citizens now that are going to be our leaders someday. What better important job could we have? You know, it's not a job, it's a volunteer, but the people that are employed with our district, I think there's 15, 1600 people employed, you know, we're overseeing that and make and have a strategic plan. We have budgets, we have plans, we have, you know, things that we're following, and it's, it's exciting to be part of that. I'm not a teacher. My husband is, but I'm always excited to hear how his teams are doing, his coaching, how his students are. It's what more, um, you know, we're we're molding young people to be our leaders someday. I don't know what else to say. That's just the most awesome board that I could be on, and I'm excited and looking forward to another four years.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all the candidates for participating this evening. Thanks to the city for providing the room and the school system for filming the forum and rebroadcasting it, and thank you to the audience very much. Now, remember to use your power as citizens to vote on November 5th. The school board and the city council election are combined on that date. Now, the next League of Women Voters Candidate Forum will be for the city council candidates, and that's on October 23rd. Thank you.